The job of the board isn't to select the goals that are convenient for the superintendent. It isn't to select the goals for which we already have easy available metrics. It isn't to select the goals that the feds would like or the state would like. It's to select goals to represent the vision of the community.
Welcome to Talking About Kids. I am your host, R. Bradley Snyder, researcher, activist, and co-author of the What Every Child Needs to Know series of board books for pre-readers. Public opinion of school boards is low. And that is kind of understandable. When they are not making headlines for banning books, or being racist, or arming teachers, videos of school board meetings turning into WWE-style melees are blowing up social media. So when the award-winning educator A.J. Crabbell comes out with a brand-new book outlining exactly why and exactly how school boards can improve student outcomes, well, I jumped at the chance to have him on. The book is called Great on Their Behalf: Why School Boards Fail, How Yours Can Become Effective. I think it is smart. I think it is accessible. I think it is right. This podcast was sponsored in part by the Arizona Department of Health Services Must Stop Bullying Campaign through its Title V Maternal and Child Health Program. For more information, go to muststopbullying.org. And now, the interview.
I was trying to be an effective parent. Kids struggling at school, talk to the teacher. Teacher says they agree, but there's things that are beyond their control. So we talked to the principal. Principal says they agree, but there are things that are beyond their control. And so I show up at the school board meeting with the teacher and principal sitting in the chairs behind me. But I'm at the podium talking to the school board and saying, hey, here's the challenge that you're having. You know, I've visited with the staff and we haven't been able to get it resolved, so I'm bringing to you all. Yeah, well, what do we do next? How do we make this work for our kids? And, you know, some were kind of checking their Twitter page or whatever on their phone, and others seemed to be half-dazed off. And then really seemed to be, not many of them seemed to be paying a lot of attention. And then they said, alright, well, thank you. Okay, the next speaker is like, whoa, whoa, hold on now, wait a minute. I've come to you all with a real problem, and I need you all to work with me to resolve this problem. What are we gonna do with it? Like, I'm sorry, sir, you know, we can't respond to any of your concerns, but thank you for coming out and sharing. Moving on, the next speaker is like, what is happening here? And it just felt really, really, it was a painful experience. What I know now that I didn't know then is that most school boards across the country during board meetings, when they have public comments available, aren't going to engage in two-way conversation. And this actually turns out to be really good reasons for that, both legal and logistic. But I didn't know that, and nobody explained it to me. So I was expecting to come and have a conversation about how do we solve real problems for real kids who are impacting a whole school. And that is kind of the brush-off. And it just left this bad taste in my mouth. And from there, it's like, I'm gonna get involved as a head of my kid's parent association. We're gonna, we're gonna deal with this thing. And one thing led to another, no good deed goes a punished.
Well, it's so interesting that that's your path, because obviously, I think that path is one that maybe my listeners are familiar with, where a parent with an axe to grind suddenly gets involved, right? They have an issue that is very personal to them. You talk in your book about the distinction between a parent and a community member. You use the analogy, I believe, of a customer versus an owner.
Yeah.
Can we talk about that distinction for a moment?
Certainly. And so the, the challenge is that the school board has an obligation to a certain group of people that is different than the obligation that the superintendent and the staff have. They're two different roles, and so they have two different sets of obligations. And part of the challenge is that the two different roles overlap heavily. Like, there is a context in which the board members have an obligation to parents, and a context in which they have no obligation to parents whatsoever. So if, as a parent, I have an issue with the homework assignment, that my, the score, my kid got a homework assignment, that is not an issue for a school board member to get involved in. School board members shouldn't show up and say, hey, well, you know, I think this teacher didn't give the right score, or you know, gave this the right score. In that context, the parent and the board member have nothing to discuss, not yet. They might in the future, but in that moment, the last thing we want is board members showing up in classrooms telling teachers how to teach. Like, that's the last thing we possibly want. But there is a different context in which the parent, who also happens to live there, I mean, this is generally the case in public schools. If we attend, our children attend here, it's because we live here. As someone who lives in this community, that I have a concern about how the resources of the school system are being used, and whether they're being equitably distributed across all our students. In that context, that is a conversation that, it makes no sense for the parent to be happy with the teacher, because they have no role in making that level of a decision. That's a conversation to have with the board member. And so it's the same person, it's the same parent, they haven't changed. But sometimes they're wearing the hat of someone who needs customer service, and they need that from the professional staff. And sometimes they're wearing the hat of someone who is an authentic owner of the school system. And they need owner service from someone who is a representative of the community's vision and values. And so even though I'm the same parent, I have two different sets of needs. Some that involve staff, because I need customer service, and some that involve board members, because I need owner service. But what's problematic is often board members here, a member of the community, a parent show up, and just automatically say anything they have to say, that is my job to provide owner service for, not realizing, no, sometimes what that parent really needs is customer service. And it's not just for some random good governance ideal that you would make this differentiation. Part of the value of this is, because what really needs to happen is we need to make sure that stuff gets done. We need to make sure that when children have issues and concerns, and families have issues, concerns, that that gets resolved as quickly as it can possibly get resolved. And every single time, the most efficient way to get things resolved is to have the person who has a concern, the parent, visit with the person who is closest to being able to make the actual decision that could make a difference. So the board member is literally the furthest person away from making a difference if, as a parent, I have a concern about my kid's homework assignment. It is not possible to be a part of the school system and be further hierarchically from where that decision needs to be made than to be on the school board. That is the furthest possible point away from where the decision needs to be made, which is in that classroom. And so you want decisions that are happening in the classroom to be resolved as close to the classroom as possible. Things that are happening in the boardroom, they need to be resolved as close to the boardroom as possible. And if board members don't make that differentiation, then they get themselves involved in classroom-level things that isn't helping the student get their need addressed as quickly as possible. And so if we really want to honor the needs of parents, we really want to honor the needs of students, it means we do have to differentiate between when are they seeking customer support and when are they seeking owner support. And then we need to get them to the appropriate person, either the customer service rep or the owner service rep.
It's a statement you make a lot in your book. In fact, you comment that it can't be made too many times, that the school system exists to improve outcomes for students.
One reason and one reason only.
And in service of that, you lay out what you believe, and I think you're right, the role of a school board should be. And you talk about it having this kind of dual role, if I'm not mistaken, of kind of setting these goals, these very specific goals. You have recommendations around those goals, but also defining values and guardrails. Let's, let's talk a little bit, I think, about the values and guardrails first, because you just mentioned that in being responsive to the owners, which are the community. What are these values and guardrails, and how does a board use them?
Yeah, so as you mentioned, the job of the board is to represent the vision and the values. The vision is, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? And we create a set of goals that is the distillation of that. And the, and we represent the values of the community, which are what are the non-negotiables that have to be honored on the path to the vision. And we distill those down to what we refer to as guardrails. Then probably the easiest way to help describe the distinction between this is, you know, to relate the story of the time, I was leaving my office, I was headed to the airport. And so I called a rideshare. And, you know, when I call the rideshare, the first thing you do is you put in your destination. I put in, you know, I want to go to the airport. And at this moment, I've clarified my vision, where I want to go. And so the goal that I have is get me to the airport. But on this particular day, I happen to know that the most obvious highway that you would normally take to get to the airport was completely shut down for construction. So as soon as I hopped in the back of the, of the rideshare, I leaned up to the driver and said, don't take I-35, it's completely shut down for construction. That, that's my value, because I, because the value is timeless. I want to get to the airport preferably before the airplane leaves without me. And so at this moment, I've given the driver, I've given the superintendent, the vision that I have, the goal, which is get to the airport, and the value that I have, the guardrail, which is don't take I-35. And in this context, I've now left it to the driver, I've left it to the superintendent to make all other operational decisions that get us closer to the airport without taking I-35. There's several other ways that we could get to the airport, and the superintendent makes that call. We could go left or right, or speed up or slow down, the superintendent makes that call. This, this is the nature of the board's work, is to say, here's where we need to go. I want to get to a point where all my graduates are graduating college career military-ready, that they have the knowledge and skills necessary, that's inclusive of literacy and numeracy, but it's also inclusive of critical thinking, collaboration, problem-solving. That's the vision that this community has, and so we're gonna create a goal about that. We want our kids to be college career military-ready. Simultaneously, I have values that have to be honored. I don't want the superintendent making any decisions without first engaging, any major decisions, without first engaging with the families and staff that will be impacted by those decisions. So that's the guardrail. My value is inclusion, my value is voice, my value is respect. And so now I've said these two things to the superintendent. Get me to where all my students are college career military readiness. Don't make any significant decisions without first engaging with my impacted families and staff members. And so this is why the board would adopt a guardrail. Don't make major decisions without impact, because it's not enough that we get to all of my students being college career military readiness. In my community, how we get there is also deeply meaningful. And so the job of the board is to clarify what would be out of bounds, because it's inconsistent with this community's values. What are the things that you can't do? Now, anything that is in bounds, there's all kinds of options. And we leave that up to the superintendent to have the freedom and the flexibility so they can push more autonomy down to our educators. The more autonomy the board gives the superintendent, the more autonomy the superintendent can give the principals, and the more autonomy principals can give to the teachers. If the board governs in a way that completely robs the superintendent of all autonomy, what they often don't realize that they're doing is they're simultaneously robbing educators of their autonomy in the classroom as well. And so the more autonomy the board can push down, the better. This is why the board uses guardrails, to say, what is out of bounds? We're not gonna tell you how to do the job. We're gonna rely on our teachers, our principals, our professional educators to figure out how to do the job. We're just gonna tell you what's out of bounds as you do the job. Like, you can't do that job in a silo. You can't do it without being in communication with the folks who are impacted by the work that you're doing. But as long as you're being in communication and you're getting us closer and closer to the vision, then all the other decisions, you know, we trust our professional educators to make those. That's why the board would select a set of guardrails to represent the community's value. Because it, not intuitively, the, the setting of guardrails actually creates more freedom of operation for the professional educators, our teachers, our principals, the superintendent, than the other way. The other way the boards operate is they say, anytime you want to do something, come ask us, and we'll tell you if you can do it or not. That is not creating freedom, that's not pushing autonomy down to our educators. And so this guardrails approach is, we're not gonna tell you what to do, and we're not gonna make you come and play Mother May I every time you want to do something. It's right for children. We're just gonna tell you what's out of bounds, and as long as you don't violate those guardrails, because those are the community's values, anything else that you all need to do to get justice for children, go forth and do it.
I want to come back to this notion of assessing a community's values in a moment, because I do think that I'm watching school boards across the country struggle with activist community members that might be a loud minority in their community, really pushing for values that might not be shared with everybody in that. But I think it might be useful to, to tell my listeners about what you consider smart goals for a board. What are, what are smart goals? Because I think this is really important.
Yeah, so for all my folks who've worked in special ed for a while, y'all already know what time it is. We talk about smart goals, we talk about goals that describe, what is it that we want our students to know and be able to do? That happen to be specific, measurable, attainable results focused and time-bound. That are, that are smart, specific, measurable, attainable results focused and time-bound. For them to be specific means that we, that they can't be general. Let's, we want kids to do good. That's, that's general.
Productive members of society, which I've seen in a lot of, right. I don't know what that means.
We want them to be lifelong learners. We're not gonna tell you what that actually means. And again, these things sound lovely, but, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't describe them as goals. I wouldn't describe them as something that we can clearly identify, did we get there or not? And so the first step is they have to be specific. It can be like, we hope everything works out for kids. Those, like, which specific group of kids are we talking about? And what are the improvements that we want to see for them? They have to be measurable. This means that there has to be some type of data that we're relying on that gives us insights to, are we getting closer to children knowing and being able to do these things or not? If it's not measurable, it's pretending. That we're pretending that we're getting justice for children, but with the benefit of never actually having to prove that we're creating educational justice for children. It has to be measurable, the goal has to be measurable. We have to have some way of measuring and knowing, are we actually getting it done? I don't want to hear your opinion about, is little A.J. literate or not? I need, I need to have evidence that he is. I, I need to know it for certain. And so when I'm making decisions at the district-wide level, individual opinions are not useful to me, largely because they're just not calibrated to each other. And to be clear, when I say opinions, I'm talking about grades. Unless there is a really structured and common assessment system put in place that both describes what is being assessed and how it's being assessed, and structured around the assessment. What happens with grades is that in one building, the algebra teacher could give students an A for doing this level of work, another teacher could give them a B for doing this level of work. And heck, another teacher might actually give them a C for doing this level of work. And so that, that's not helpful information to me of making system-wide decisions, because that would lead me to think that the kid in building C needs more resources than the kid in building A, and that's, that's not necessarily the case. So I, I'd need some type of measurement at the system level that gives me some insights in it, how do we deploy resources to best create educational justice for our students? It has to be measurable, specific, measurable, it has to be attainable. If we create goals that are just beyond anything that is reasonable, all we're gonna do is humiliate and demoralize our teachers. And that's, that's a horrible, horrible way to lead. I, I hear people say, hey, we want to have a, a vision that's a stretch. I agree with that, have the vision statement be a stretch. This is what we want to be true for all students. But when we talk about a goal, a goal actually needs to be attainable. What is a specific chunk of improvement that we expect to make over this next period? So that we can actually see that we're moving in a direction of creating educational justice for all our children. It, it has to be attainable, it has to be results-focused. If it's not about what students know and are able to do, then it doesn't count as a goal. School systems don't exist to have a balanced budget. That's not about what students know and are able to do. So we would never have a goal about a balanced budget, because that's not, it's not focused on the result that school systems exist to create. School systems don't exist to create a balanced budget, they exist to create educated children. So all the goals have to be about, what is it that our students actually know and actually are able to do? Schools don't exist to have great facilities, so you never have a goal about facilities, because that's not a measure of what students know. Well, unless your general contractor and your maintenance team are all eighth graders, then I guess I would say, yes, that's a measure of what students know and are able to do. But in the absence of that, it's a measure of adults. And I'm not saying that balanced budgets are bad, or great facilities, or books, or all these other adult inputs. There's nothing wrong with those, they're just not why school systems exist. They're not the results school systems exist to create. And so having a goal about them, it doesn't meet the standard of being results-focused. And then finally, the T is time-bound.
Yeah, time-bound, and I want to make sure we got that in. But I also want to, to, to be clear, you're not saying that the easy measures are the ones you necessarily need to adopt. It doesn't have to be, you don't need to necessarily measure all students by the standardized test that the vendor is selling. You talk about there being multiple ways, potentially, to measure achievement.
Yeah, here's, here's the part that most people struggle with. This is not about the state, or the state's assessment, or the state's wishes. This is not about the feds, or the fed's assessment, or the fed's wishes. This is about one thing and one thing only. When it comes to goals, this is about the vision of the community. The only thing that we're trying to capture with the goals is what is the community's vision for what students should know and be able to do, and how we distill that down to a smart fashion? What is the community's vision for what students should know and be able to do? And wherever that leads, that's where, that's where the board ought to go, wherever that leads. So whatever the community says, these are the highest priority things that our students need to know or be able to do, that's where you go. Probably one of the more common mistakes boards make of this is that they will hear a community say, well, we want our kids to be critical thinkers, and that's our number-one priority. I've heard a number of communities say, it's all right, makes sense. And then the board will go back, say, hey, superintendent, we need a measure. Well, what's our measure for critical thinking? Superintendent says, we don't have one. And so the board's like, well, since we don't have a measure for that, I guess that can't be a goal. Well, no, that's not what that means. Your job is to represent the vision of the community. And so if there's not a measure, the superintendent's job is to figure it out. The, the job of the board isn't to select the goals that are convenient for the superintendent. It isn't to select the goals for which we already have easy available metrics. It isn't to select the goals that the feds would like, or the state would like, or... It's to select goals to represent the vision of the community. And wherever that leads, that's where the board needs to go. And so increasingly, you know, I saw a board that said, what we want is, we want to know the percentage of students who are on track to be successful two years post-graduation. And the superintendent was apoplectic, was like, wait a minute, I, I can't be responsible for whether or not students are successful two years post-graduation. And the board's response was, look, that's what the community wants, and we need you to find a measure. And if you're saying that's not something you can be responsible for, that's fine, we'll accept your resignation. And we'll, we'll find somebody who, who is aligned with the vision of the community. But it's not the job of the community to get aligned to the comfort of the superintendent or the measures of the state. It's the job of the goals to get aligned to the vision of the community.
And the other thing I also want to clarify, because a problem that I have with how some standardized assessments are used in schools is that they are a one-and-done, they look at students on one day in a year, and if the measure is bad, that year's done. But you talk about constantly monitoring progress towards these measures.
Yeah, that's right. Many, yeah, you want a whole bunch of snapshots. You don't, like, there's no way of getting out of snapshots. I mean, there's always, you know, it's a given day is a given measure. What you want to get out of is relying on one. For the entire year, we will look at this one snapshot of this one day, that will be a proxy for it. But this is foolishness for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is if we're only looking at data once, that means we're elevating adult behaviors for 364 days of the year, elevating what students know and are able to do one day of the year, and then going back and focusing on adult inputs for the rest of the year. This, this is deeply problematic. And so what you really want to do is you want to create, you know, this drumbeat of accountability, where we just have this regularly occurring every month, month in, month out, we're looking at data about what is it that our students know and are able to do, that, and what shifts are we seeing in that over time? What we're really looking for isn't a particular dot in time. What we're really looking for is a trajectory. Like, are, what, what is the directionality that we're moving? And what is the speed with which we're moving in that direction? Like, if, if we are moving up, but the speed of improvement means we're not gonna get there for 40 years, this is problematic. You know, or if we're very quickly moving down, that's also problematic. And so it's, it's about, it's about speed and trajectory, and really knowing, getting some sense through multiple measures of what's actually happening. What's, what's the reality for our students?
And so you can own it, too. I mean, so that if it's, if you see right away that the course isn't working, you can correct it. You're not so...
The frequency of monitoring gives rise to the frequency of pivoting, absolutely.
And you also talk a lot about when the board behaves this way, that it can cascade through the entire education system, clear down into the classroom.
The board spends time actually focusing on what students know and are able to do, then it creates a safe space for the administration to do the same thing. Or said differently, one of the catastrophic dysfunctions of boards is when they spend all of their time on these things that might be super-popular on Twitter or Facebook, but ain't really moving the needle for kids. The problem is they, they draw the administration. And I, I tell a story in the book about a board that just went on this extended debate about the color of buses. You know, the, the board members, I'm philosophically opposed to non-yellow, but like, that phrase is burning in my mind, I gotta tell you. Like, I, I am, I, I don't know that, you know, Bradley, I will ever not be traumatized by that phrase. I'm philosophically opposed to non-yellow buses. And then, you know, the administration goes on a two-week expedition to learn everything there is about the color of buses. And the teachers' union gets involved, and local paper gets involved, everybody gets involved. And then at the next board meeting, they spend another hour debating and discussing, receiving presentations. And then ultimately, of course, the board does absolutely nothing, it's forgotten, and you move on to whatever the next thing of the moment is. And the challenge is that, for that two-week period of time, the superintendent and their entire team were not focused on our children learning, and what can we be doing to support principals? And what can we be doing to make sure the principals are providing supports they need to their teachers, and the teachers have the supports that they need? That was not the dominant conversation. The dominant conversation was, how are we gonna sort out this yellow bus situation? And in that moment, students suffer. When adults are not aligned around what it is that students need to grow and what they know and are able to do, students suffer in that moment.
And, you know, an exercise that you do when you are consulting and working with boards is you confront them with how they've spent their time in meetings, and ask them, you know, did this conversation improve outcomes for students, right? That's something that you, you ask them. Would you ever ask, and I want to go back to this, this point I started to raise earlier. We've seen now, you know, school board meetings being hijacked by, by certain politicized groups that may, that I question whether or not they reflect the goals of the community, the values of the community. Would you ever ask a community member that question when they are proposing, for example, to ban certain books, or to ban certain styles of dress? Would you ever consult, would you ever recommend that a board member ask them how that contributes to improving student outcomes?
Certainly, but not exactly the way you do it, because that's just gonna be triggering for people, and then it's gonna be...
Understood.
So what, so what we do is, the coaching that I offer for board members is to get curious, and to recognize that people are going to bring us issues. And it's not the job of the board to represent the issues of individual community members. It is the job of the board to represent the values of the community. And so anytime an individual community member comes to you with an issue, my coaching is, you need to push on that issue enough times until you get clarity about the value underneath it. And so, you know, I tell the story of, you know, Ms. Johnson, who demanded, you know, that she gets a stop sign on her block. And so I asked Ms. Johnson, why, why do you want a stop sign? Why is that important? She said, well, these cars are going too fast. Why is that important to you? Or was, you know, these kids are out here trying to play, well, why is that important to you? And I keep asking, why, why, why? And eventually, she said, well, that's not safe. And after all this nudging on the issues that are at the forefront of Ms. Johnson's thinking, I finally get to the value that undergirds all of it. I finally get to the value that undergirds all of them. And then it's my job to check in with all the other neighbors and figure out, hey. You know, what, what's going on for you all and to push on their issues to get at their values and to figure out, is this concern about safety, is this a shared value? That I have an obligation to go out and represent. And if so, then it's my job to go figure out how to honor the value of safety. It's not my job to be handing out stop signs. So this, this is the distinction that board members stumble into. It's like, well, Ms. Johnson says she wants a stop sign, so I'm elected her, elected official, I gotta go get her a stop sign. That is not your job. That is not your job. Your job is not to represent the interest. In the issues of individual community members. It's to represent the, the vision and values of the community as a whole. But that means that when anybody shows up on your doorstep, talking about various issues, the coaching that I offer board members. You gotta push on those issues to get a sense of what are the values underneath of it. It's not your opportunity, it's not your job to go around handing out stop signs to board. But even, and often, especially if you have a disagreement with the stop sign that that particular community member wants. Like if you were repulsed by the desire for stop sign. You still have an obligation to get at what is the value underneath the request for the stop sign. And you still have an obligation to identify, is this a shared value that is largely held in this community? And if so, you still have an obligation to be responsive to that underlying value. You know, the case of Ms. Johnson and the story that I told in the book, we wound up getting this speed bump, you know, to help slow down traffic to make it safer for the kids. Ms. Johnson was not happy with her speed bump. I did not get applause from Ms. Johnson. I did my job, however. I honored her value and the shared value of the folks on that block. Even though, um, it didn't honor the issue that Ms. Johnson had.
AJ, I wanna thank you so much for your work. Eh, eh, and I wanna thank you for this book. Eh, eh, it's been. It's the best book on the topic that, that I've read and it's taught me a lot, um, about boards and, uh, given me a lot to think about and. And what I want from the school boards that I have contact with. So, so thank you so much.
Appreciate that, thank you. I really, really appreciate that. I, I gotta be honest with you. Terrified, terrified. Like the, the day when it actually came to like hit the button to make it available. And to tell people that it was coming, it's like, everybody gonna know I'm a frog. All my horrible ideas will be on display in print. Up until this point, it was just me talking about it, but now it's gonna be written down for all to see.
Yeah, but man, there's, there's a lot of data in this too. There's a lot. So. I, I will be promoting it, uh, as, as best I can, but thank you for being a guest.
I appreciate it. Thanks so much for having me, Brad.
That was AJ Cravell. For more information about AJ and his book, Great on Their Behalf. Why School Boards Fail, How Yours Can Become Effective. Please visit TalkingAboutKids.com. From there, you also can find out about upcoming episodes, suggest a topic. Learn more about me and my books, or submit your questions for future guests. Our theme song is by The Senators. For more of their music, go to TheSenatorsMusic.com. And remember, kids are young goats and young children. And the difference is that young goats are easier to manage.